Here we go again. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome the members of council, staff and members of the public to our May 26 council meeting and call this meeting to order. I'd like to ask Mrs. Pearson for the roll call, please.
Thank you, your worship. Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Hyatt.
Present.
Counselor O'Hara.
Counselor Patel.
Present.
Counselor Welsh.
Present.
Deputy Mayfield.
Present.
Mayor Lucely.
Present.
And there is a quorum, your worship.
Thank you. I'd like to move on and ask Mrs. Pearson for the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement, please.
We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, the Odoawa and the Potawatomi peoples, referred to collectively as the Anishna Bag. The town of Petrolia is located on the lands associated with the Huron Track Treaty Number 29 of 1827. We express gratitude for the land where we live, work and play, and we are committed to working respectfully within the land and the Indigenous peoples who have called this land home.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. At this time, I'd like to request that council declare conflict of interest now or at the appropriate time and complete the necessary paperwork. Seeing none, I'll move on to the, we have an adoption of the agenda. There's the adoption before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt as presented the May 26, 2025 agenda.
Any questions from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed. That motion carries. That'll take us to the adoption of the minutes of our regular council meeting held on May the 12th. There's a motion before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor. Moved by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. Any questions regarding the minutes, errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed. That motion carries. That'll take us now to the moment of reflection. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand. Please be seated. Thank you. That'll take us now to the roundtable announcements. And first on my list this time is Counselor Clark.
I don't think I have anything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Hyatt.
I have nothing to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Patel.
Sorry, I have nothing to share at this time.
Goodness gracious. Counselor, oh, sorry, Counselor Welsh.
Petrolia Discovery will open first weekend in June for official tours, but we already have been busy with lots of book things, so that's good.
Good. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Field.
I have nothing at this time.
Gee, I'm really sorry, but I have a few items here just for your information. I attended the Rotary Club of Petrolia's 70th anniversary on Tuesday, May the 13th at the Kingswell Glen Golf Club and brought greetings on behalf of council and staff. I congratulated them on their 70th anniversary and thanked them for all they do for the community in making Petrolia a better place to live. It was a great program with a full crowd and I really liked it. I was a past president of Rotary and I saw past presidents from the last 30 years or more, and it was really nice to see those people. I also attended the open house for the Pathways Health Center celebration for their 50th anniversary on Wednesday, May 14th. It was filled to capacity with a short program. I took part in the Lampton County Committee of the Whole Meeting on May the 21st and will continue to keep council informed. Mr. Rick Charlebois, CEO Treasurer, and I took part in an online meeting regarding the renovations to the CEE Hospital Emergency Department on Wednesday, May the 21st, and I know we did send out an email. The drawings and costs were reviewed with a final report to go to the ministry with construction to hopefully start in the fall. The administration has been working very hard on this project for a number of years. So we're looking forward to improvements to the emergency department at our hospital. I attended the farmer's market grand opening on Saturday, May 24th, and with excitement, I welcomed everyone on behalf of council and staff to the grand opening of our farmer's market for the season. There was a good turnout with entertainment and free breakfast for everyone. Special thanks to Larissa Ellsworth, Julie Bullock, Tara Wagner, Ross Ellsworth, Counselor Chad Hyatt, and all the other volunteers involved with cooking and helping out. There was a good turnout and it was a good time by all. And that's all that I have. That'll take us now to the council representatives on the different committees. And well, I'll have you speak to that first and then we'll put the motion on the floor for further discussion. First on my list is the Community Health and Wellness Advisory Committee. We have Counselor Deb Patel and Counselor Clark. I'd like to take the lead on that. Counselor Clark, go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you, your worship. There's really nothing outside of the minutes. We selected a new chair for the, for the upcoming year. Uh, discussed some of the, uh, uh, terms, I guess, of the sitting on the committees for some, some newer people. And, uh, yeah, everything, like I said, is pretty much covered in the minutes as they stand.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Bill about that? If not, I need a motion to approve the minutes. Would you like to make that motion? Move by Counselor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to endorse as presented minutes of the Community Health and Wellness Advisory Committee held on May 6, 2025.
Last chance, any further discussion? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to the Petrolia Heritage Advisory Committee. We have Counselor Welsh and of course Counselor O'Hara is not here. Counselor Welsh, would you like to speak to that, please?
Um, just due to various illnesses and germs that were circulating, we did not have quorum. However, there are a couple of people listed here who are no longer on the committee and also weren't at the meeting. So Nicole Stuck and Terry Sire should be removed from that.
Fully noted from that list.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion to approve the, the minutes that are before you? Okay, moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to endorse as amended with the removal of the two members minutes of the Petrolia Heritage Advisory Committee meeting scheduled for May 2nd, 7th, 2025.
Thank you. Well done. Any questions from council? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those? Thank you. That motion carries. That'll take us to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. We have Counselor Clark and Counselor Hyatt. Which one of you gentlemen would like to take the lead on this tonight? Counselor Hyatt, go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you. Um, just a couple of highlights. Uh, we received a letter from the Petroy Minor Hockey Association related to ice time at the arena. Uh, so that was provided for, for review, uh, for the committee. Uh, we welcomed David Horward to her first meeting as Chair of the Youth Advisory Subcommittee, which is now a Subcommittee of Parks and Rec. So she attended her first meeting. And, uh, we supported volunteering for opening the farmer's market on the weekend.
You were doing a fine job cooking. It was good. It was fun. Um, thank you for that. And I am pleased that, and I realize that's the first meeting of having the youth advisory with Parks and Rec. I think that's great. I hope that carries on and goes well. Would you like to make a motion to move the minutes? Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to endorse as presented minutes of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting held on April 2nd and May 7th, 2025.
Any errors or omissions? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor for approving those minutes? Opposed. That motion carries. That takes us to the Petrolia North Edduskillan Fire Committee. We have Counselor Hyatt and Counselor O'Hara is not here. Counselor Hyatt, would you like to speak to that, please?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, so this meeting was really to, uh, primary focus was to talk about the decontamination facility. Uh, Chief was looking at an option of providing a facility within the South Bay of the fire hall. Based on that review would not be a feasible option. Um, so the committee has now asked, uh, for Chief Cousins to work with a third party consultant to come up with some conceptual planning, uh, that would be outside of the existing facility. So that was, uh, one highlight. The second highlight I will say is, uh, some preliminary specs and informations related to a new fire apparatus, which is a pumper, a fire pumper. Uh, so we have a tanker, uh, on order. So this is the next piece of apparatus that will need to be, uh, updated in the fire department.
Thank you for that, Counselor Hyatt. And I also just want to pass on, I want to thank you for having the minutes come so quickly this time. So I really appreciate it getting them in a reasonable time. Um, all right. I'll ask, uh, do we have it? Did I get a move and a second or not?
Not your worship.
Okay, I'll need a move and a second to put that motion on the floor for approval. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to endorse as presented draft minutes of the Petrolia North Edduskillan Fire Committee meeting held on May 1st, 2025.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed. That motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us to the Municipal Services and Traffic. We have Deputy Mayor Field. We do have an alternate Counselor Hyatt. But Deputy Mayor Field, would you take the lead on that, please?
Yes, I will. Thank you through you, your worship. Um, few, uh, items repaving at first Ave. Um, and sidewalk tender has been posted on bids and tender. Petroya line, water line upsizing tender will go out this week, um, on bids and tenders as well. And the Public Works new truck, the one ton dump, um, arrived this week and is now in service. And substantially less than our budgeted amount.
Yes.
Good. Thank you for that, Deputy Mayor Field. I'm really pleased that we've got moving on that water line on the main street. That's great news. Any, uh, first of all, I'll ask for a move and a second to put that motion on the floor. Deputy Mayor Field, would you make that motion? Seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file Deputy Mayor Field's verbal update on the municipal service happenings.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, that'll take us to, just a second here. All right, we have, uh, for the, uh, next portion, we have for the planning and development. I have Deputy Mayor Field and Counselor Hyatt. Uh, would one of you gentlemen like to speak to that, please? Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And through you, um, I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Benjamin's and we went through, um, there's several, um, items. We had two minor variances that were approved in April. Um, site plan applications that are under review are deemed complete. I believe Krabby's is done. The Legion has done southwest fence and deck. And I believe that the 411 wingfield is still in agency circulation review. There's severance on Discovery Line and um, just working to finalize the final details for Country View Estates for Phase 9. And to continue the effort for the East Sector lands, uh, which is a joint collaboration with several applicants. They're still working very hard through that. Um, I think that's pretty much the highlights of very busy committee still.
That's good. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. And of course, I am very anxious at keeping those developments moving as quickly as possible. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that motion on the floor. Deputy Mayor Field, would you move that? Okay, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file Deputy Mayor Field's verbal update on planning and development happenings. Um, and the county of Lampton's first quarter reporting of building activities in the town of Petrolia.
And before I ask for the vote, I just wanted to mention, as you can see, the process has slowed right down. And the province has stated to me, and their quote is, "We're stuck in the mud." I just thought I'd pass that on. All right. All those in favor of approving that verbal report? Seconded, okay? No, no objections. That motion carries. That'll take us to number 11, correspondence for information. We have A to F. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Clark. Any discussion or anyone wishing to pull anything out separately? Counselor Welsh.
I'll request that we pull items, uh, the items listed in 11C separately, please.
Number C? Okay, I'll pull that out. Any others? The only interesting, I thought, if you, if you noticed, I was interested to read number D. I thought that was of interest. All right. There's no other questions from council. I'll ask for, I'll call the vote.
Worship, do we have a second or?
Uh, Counselor Clark, seconded that. All right, I'll call the vote and that's from A to F with the exception of C. Counselor Patel, do you have a question?
Oh, sorry, no.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Okay, Counselor Welsh, go ahead with C.
So moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Joel Field. Whereas the council of the town of Petrolia has received correspondence from the Godrich, from Godrich Town of Madawa and the township of Springwater in opposition to strong mayor's powers. Therefore be it resolved that the council of the town of Petrolia acknowledged receipt of the letters circulated by Godrich, Madawa and Springwater in, in opposition of strong mayor's powers and further that we support them and that a copy of this motion with a recorded vote be sent to them.
Did we not do this already?
Not with these municipalities.
Pardon me?
These are new.
Okay, all right. Any questions from council? Uh, do you want to read? Oh, wait a minute. So do you want to read that motion just so we're clear on that, please? And did you, and you requesting a recorded vote?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Sorry, your worship. Let me just bring that up. I get a few emails from Counselor Welsh. Actually, worship, if I ask if Counselor Welsh could, I literally have 16 emails right now that I was floating through.
If you'd like to read that, please, Counselor Welsh.
Again?
Please.
Okay. Whereas the council of the town, Corporation of the Town of Petrolia has received correspondence from Godrich Town of Madawa and the Township of Springwater in opposition to strong mayor's powers. Therefore be it resolved that the council of the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia acknowledged receipt of the letters circulated by Godrich, Madawa and Springwater in opposition of strong mayor's powers and further that we support them and that a copy of this motion with a recorded vote be sent to them.
Okay. Any questions from council? All right, go ahead.
Recorded vote procedures is that the, um, mover will vote second last and the mayor will vote last. Everybody else is in alphabetical order. Uh, Counselor Clark, for or against?
For.
Counselor Hyatt, for or against?
For.
Uh, Counselor O'Hara is absent. Counselor Patel, for or against?
For.
Deputy Mayor Field, for or against?
For.
Counselor Welsh, for or against?
For.
Mayor Lucely, for or against?
I'm okay with that. I'm for.
That carries, your worship.
Thank you. That'll take us to the correspondence for consideration. There is not any at this time. I'd like to at this time ask Mr. Leyland Martin to come forward, please. And I'd like to ask Counselor Clark and Counselor Patel to go down and present, uh, the check. And while they're just getting ready, this is the money that council has approved to go to the County Senior Advisory Committee, of which Mr. Leyland is a, or Leyland Martin is a, now a member representing the town of Petrolia. Get a little closer.
Leyland loves hugs. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Martin, yeah, would you like to say a few words?
Your worship, members of council and staff. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to accept this on behalf of, uh, the Senior Advisory Committee. I'm, uh, I'm new on it and, uh, I've only attended one meeting, so, uh, the only thing I'm aware of for sure, they had no money. There was no bank account, no, no funding was whatsoever. So this funding is going to be most appreciated and I assure you it'll be stretched as far as it possibly can be stretched. And, uh, I, I thank you, yeah, each of you for the consideration and, uh, it'll be put to good use.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. And again, good luck. Thank you. That'll take us to the community announcements, recognitions and awards. There is a motion before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive this information only, the May 26, 2025 community announcements as presented.
Thank you. Mrs. Ellsworth, do you have anything you'd like to add? Oh, there you are.
I snuck over here. Nothing at this time, your worship. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us for the first opportunity for the public to address council. Is there anyone here wishing to address council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to 16, which is reports. We have a report from the Marketing Arts and Communication. Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing Arts and Communication regarding Victoria Playhouse Petrolia launching the capital fundraiser. And you have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the motion or on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Patel. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Director of Marketing Arts and Communications dated May 26, 2025 regarding the Victoria Playhouse Petrolia launches capital fundraiser.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. I just want to mention that I, I would like to ask the community to get involved to help raise money for this worthwhile project. And I'll also at this time, I get, I'll ask, um, Mrs. Ellsworth, do you have anything else you'd like to add on this?
The biggest thing, your worship, is the underscore that it's not just for the Victoria Playhouse. This is a community project that's going to benefit all users of Victoria Hall. Um, and what it comes down to is dignity, safety and a barrier-free visit to the building.
Thank you for that clarification and clearing that up. That's great. Thank you, Mrs. Ellsworth. Any questions from council? Counselor Welsh.
Um, just kudos to you. I know how long this has been in the works and, uh, it's very exciting to see this finally get launched and I'll be in with a check.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to hear that. Any other questions from council? All those in favor of approving that project? Opposed. That motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to the, uh, Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing Arts and Communication regarding the 150 final report. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Director of Marketing Arts and Communications dated May 26, 2025 regarding the Petrolia 150 final report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. I too want to congratulate Mrs. Ellsworth, Denise Tebow Chair, and the board members involved with the 150 committee. I think it was a great year. Well done, everyone. I also, um, want to mention, Mrs. Ellsworth, thank you. Good report. That was great and good news. Any other questions from council? Okay, I'll call the vote. Can't keep up. All those in favor? Opposed. That motion carries. Thank you. And again, we have another one, report from Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth regarding the Experience Ontario 2025 regarding ABBA. And it took me a while to figure out what that was. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Director of Marketing Arts and Communications dated May 26, 2025 regarding the successful Victoria Playhouse Petrolia application to Experience Ontario Grant Program and that staff be directed to proceed with using the funds in support of all about ABBA.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. And again, thank you, Mrs. Ellsworth and the team for applying and obtaining $69,500. Well done. That's great news. Any other questions from council? All those in favor? Opposed. That motion carries. Now, we have a Parks and Recreation, a report from Julie Bullock regarding the Petrolia and Edduskillan Agricultural Society Fall Fair approvals. And I'll ask for a move and a second to put that motion before you on for discussion. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities dated May 26, 2025 regarding the Petrolia and Edduskillan Agricultural Society Fall Fair approvals. And that council approved the request to grant significant event status to the Petrolia and Edduskillan Agricultural Society Fall Fair, Fair as detailed in the report. And that council of the town of Petrolia grants the Petrolia and Edduskillan Agricultural Society an exemption to the Noise Bylaw 61 of 2009 for the Fall Fair as detailed in the report. And that the clerk be directed to produce confirmation of the same for application to the AGCO.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Mrs. Bullock, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed. That motion carries. Thank you.
Your worship, on the next day, and we do have a motion of amendment submitted.
All right, so will I, will I get the motion first and then we'll do the amendment?
Great.
Okay, so I have a report from Julie Bullock, Director of Parks and Recreation regarding the downtown security camera upgrade quote. Now, you've got a motion before you. We'll do the motion and then I'll take a motion for the amendment. So, uh, I need a move and a second to put that main one on the floor. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion before us first, please.
And that is the council of the town of Petrolia adopt the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities dated May 26, 2025 regarding the downtown security camera upgrades. And that council approved the award of the work to dam our security systems in the amount of $46,526.81 plus HST.
Thank you. Now, I will open it up for the entertainment for the amendment.
And the amendment did come forward from Counselor Hyatt.
Okay, Counselor Hyatt. Um, and can you read that amendment? I'll need a second. Well, read the amendment first. Now, see what we're getting.
No formal written amendment because it's just an amendment. So I don't think I have to write that formally. So I'm.
Yeah, well, if I'm going to deal with it separately, I have to know what the amendment is.
Absolutely. So, uh, the amendment will be, uh, so if you're looking at the graph where the security coverage is, there's a gap between, uh, around the front of TD Bank and, and further east. Uh, so the amendment will be related to that gap and finding, uh, a solution to getting coverage in that gap. Uh, I believe a possible solution would be to add an additional camera, which could be roughly in the cost of $6,000, $6,000.
But the amendment's just to expand by giving coverage to that area. Is that correct?
Uh, so there's, I think there's a couple of potential options. Uh, one could be to move the existing cameras. One could be to add a new camera. So I think, uh, from the amendment, it would be to provide uh, an additional $6,000 to the cost in the case we need to add a new camera to get the cover.
Okay. Now, I need a second for that amendment, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. Any discussion regarding the amendment first only? If not, we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? That motion carries. Now, we'll vote on the motion as amended. We already have a move and a second. So we're voting on the motion as amended. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, that'll take us now to, um, our closed session. I just want to mention before I ask for a motion to go into camera, under section 239.2 of the Act, we have three items to go into camera. Item one is property 01, 2025, Plan 55, Lot 20, Part Lot 19, West Part Lot 27 on Blant Street Petrolia, and a position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on to be carried on by or behalf of the municipality or local board. The second item is property, which is Plan 52 Block C, Lot 20 to Lot 22, Concession 10, Part Lot 11 on Dufferin Avenue. And I think I'll just leave it at that. And the item number three is personnel regarding the annual Chief Administrative Officers Performance Appraisal. And that's why what we're going to discuss in camera, I'll ask for a motion to go into camera. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. All those in favor? Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. We will go into camera, and I'll ask everyone to, you'll have to please leave this area. We will remain here for the closed meeting. So please step outside.